I would plead justice to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead, do a roll call. Alden Bokart?
Here.
Alden Blank?
Here.
Alden O?
Here.
Alden Bell?
Here.
Alden Wilson?
Here.
Alden Lewis?
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve of June 20, 2023 meeting minutes and June 28th, 2023 meeting minutes, special meetings?
So.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Where we get a motion to approve agenda. Kyle, you make your.
Yeah, in light of Chief Edwards not being here this evening to present on it, we're going to pull item F, a resolution authorizing adjustment to the FTEs from the City of Ashland Police Department.
Thank you. Can I get a motion approval for the night's agenda?
So.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None of special items, none. None of appointments and votes and permissions, none. Scheduled public comments, Chuck Donegan, 407 Billy Joseph Drive. Please state your name, address, and.
Hi, I'm Charles Donegan, D O N I G I N, 407 Billy Joseph Drive. Now, here, this.
One thing, do you have anything new to add to your?
Oh, lots of stuff to add, yes, sir.
Okay, with that, we need to limit everything to five minutes?
Oh, awesome.
Okay.
First of all, before we start my five minutes, it's the 401-7 Billy Joseph wastewater, stormwater project. It's not the 407 Billy Joseph.
So.
It was to help the people at 401 since I'm at 407. And also, in your package, you saw what I presented before on the sixth of last month. And this is just kind of a follow-up because I was hoping maybe to hear something back from you guys. And thank you so much for allowing me to address the Board of Alderman. To continue on, I have invoices here from Allstate for 53 hours of work by engineers and surveyors to design the original plans for $6,523 in 2019. The same plans the Board of Alderman voted on and approved on January 19th, 2021. Eight days later, Allstate and Public Works had come up with a new set of plans to cut down the affected homeowners and save costs. And share that with you at the end of that meeting. Mr. Michael has apologized to me for the breakdown in communication related to the original option 3B plans that I was told were the plan. I shared with Mr. Plank, and hopefully, well, he's telling me he didn't forward that on to you, but he's got it for your guys to review for later, information that I was able to obtain from the Freedom of Information request that I did this past print. It wasn't a communication issue. It was the city employees not being honest to the City of Ashland or the residents about what was being communicated or not communicated. The emails about easements did not address my concerns I had raised, and the affected homeowners hadn't been spoken to about the project, as the emails portrayed between the people. I asked Dan to come address the Board of Alderman with me tonight. He snickered and said, why would I do that? My yard is fixed. I would like to know, is there a conflict of interest policy for the employees who benefit financially from their decisions? It was about a public works director who was not honest about the project, who would not and would deflect when issues were raised about the project. I have an email that I came across today that I sent in July of 2022 asking about white flags and how there was already a drainage easement on the side, and these flags indicated that the city was going almost 15 feet into my side yard. James didn't mention anything about the city extending the side yard easement and just said it was a mistake. Unfortunately, I took his word. I never agreed to or was told about a drainage swell to capture the water from houses to the west and south of me. The city has a policy written by Dan in 2021 about putting fences over drainage swells, and this goes against their own policy. The fences were not taken down on the north side or the erosion issues addressed, as we agreed to. Instead, I have six to eight inches of clay that are being held up by my fence. Eventually, the same issues will return or get worse. I understand that we cannot dig up the pipe, nor do I want that. But I do want the excavated clay removed from my yard, returned in my yard, returned to some resemblance of what it was before I did the neighborly thing. Neighborly thing, I did, I volunteered to allow a project to go through my yard. Thank you. Any questions?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Now, when you proceeded, when you agreed to the project initially, were there any perceived benefits to your own yard that you figured the project would give you, or were you doing it as a goodwill gesture to your neighbors?
I had a retaining wall back there that was already having some issues with the ground coming forward some, and I had to rebuild it and stuff, and I knew that I was going to have to take care of it eventually. And previously, in my last statement, I talked about crazy dicks coming out because I was planning on doing some good work in the backyard, and I had a tree planted. And he's like, yeah, I can do that, we can do that. But yeah, so I thought, oh, so you're going to come out and take down a retaining wall and do what I was going to pay richer for. Other than that, I did say, hey, there's this erosion up in this corner. And that stuff I sent you, there's a picture of that corner up there where the erosion. It's not just my yard, it's, we're not talking about just me, I'm talking about my neighbors too, the south and north of me, both of them. There, one of them's a business owner, and they're scared to come up here and say anything, and one of them's a young couple, and they're scared to come up here and say anything. I don't care. And all I was wanting was to benefit everybody and especially benefit the gentleman that lived at 401, Billy Joseph Drive, whose house was flooding every time we had been raining. And I knew that he'd been trying to sell his house several times, couldn't get it sold. Realtors wouldn't even show his house because they knew of the drainage issues down there. And so when he showed up at my door in February of '21, and he's like, hey, Chuck, I'm like, yeah, because I'm the neighborly guy, I'm trying to help. I'm not trying to do something over on somebody like what happened to me by the city.
Is there any question? No questions for me. Any other questions?
Thanks, sir. All right, hopefully you guys address this because I don't want to have a sit.
In the public hearing, your motion is a first reading. Council Bill number 2023-025, an ordinance to change the zoning of a parcel of land from general commercial to R3 high density for Nicholas Martin Williams, for Nicholas Martin William B. K. Kimberly Martin, 104 South Main Street. Staff report, please.
All right, this is a request by Nicholas William B. and Kimberly Martin to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the rezoning of approximately 4.47 acres at 104 South Main Street. The subject property is to get approximately 4.47 acres, and it's just south of the intersection of Broadway and Main. Current zoning is CG, general commercial. Proposed zoning classification is R3, identity residential. The 2020 comprehensive plan anticipated this property to be downtown mixed-use zoning. The owners of this property contacted city staff earlier this year to discuss replacing the Main Street car wash with multifamily housing. Since residential is not a permitted use, only conditional in CG zoning, and after discussing options, R3 zoning seems to be the best fit for this site. Although this parcel is not contiguous to other R3 zone properties, mixed use is anticipated for this site as part of the city's future land use map, and similar zoning is in close proximity to the subject property. Affordable and attainable housing are target goals for the city. I rarely see proposals come along for higher density housing or multifamily housing. The proposed project would add new multifamily housing stock in close proximity to our downtown core. The proposed redevelopment would add value to the area and would lend towards reinvestment and revitalization efforts in our downtown. Since housing, especially affordable and attainable housing, is in short supply in Ashland, this would be one of a few new developments in downtown. Staff is supportive of this rezoning and the proposed redevelopment project. This was not approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission by a type of, the reason not to recommend was based on the concern for the spot zoning and the perceived undesirable nature of R3 higher density housing. Now, the owner is here along with his engineer. Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions for me?
I do have a question. For the owner.
Oh.
Chris Sanderwick with Clor Engineering, 1901 Pennsylvania Avenue. Mr. and Mrs. Martin are here as well. If we can try to answer whatever questions you have. I can try, or we can grab Mr. Martin if you prefer.
Sure, I can ask you a question.
Yeah, yeah.
What is the primary motivation to changing the type from killing the car wash and building a multifamily apartment complex?
So, the, feel free to jump in here whenever, but the, the business of the car wash has not been, you know, it's kind of dwindled. Other car washes in town have, you know, we changed that business model. It is tucked in behind those other businesses, and so it's kind of out of sight and has been, just from a sustainability standpoint, the car wash is not sustainable. So we're looking at other methods to utilize the property. Based on the shape of the, shape of the track, it's about 300 feet deep and 90 feet wide. So, commercial use for the property needs road frontage and visibility, and because of the narrow frontage and tucked in behind the other businesses, it's kind of a tough spot. Obviously, the back part can be used for some parking or something if it was commercial, but we need a fire lane to get through there, so then you're left with about 60 feet of available area across the front, which severely limits the commercial viability of the track just because of configuration and how it's shaped.
Just a couple, do you have any type of preliminary plans as far as to particular layout? You know, like you had mentioned with the unusual shape, I mean, are we talking similar to the, like the multifamily across the street, you know, that's like a strip with parking? Are we talking similarly laid out that way?
I'm not particularly familiar with across the street that you're speaking of.
It's like three or four duplexes put together.
They're single story.
Yeah.
Enigma knows better.
Yeah, and they are going to be in a line, five in a row, but what we're, what we'd like to do is like a townhouse style of like, you know, the main residence on the bottom, kitchen, living room, half bath, and two bedrooms upstairs, just to make it look nice and presentable, and just, we're just trying to improve downtown way of looks.
Sure.
We are.
Couple of follow-ups that, no, that's fine, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Just a couple of follow-up. I would assume there will be parking spaces, if it's oriented in that particular manner, that there will be parking spaces on one edge or the other. Are there any concerns about overflow parking from downtown and those kinds of things? I mean, is there a way to kind of prevent that particular thing, is it going to be posted private property, parking only? I mean, I don't think it's any secret that we've had some issues with parking in that general vicinity before.
Yeah, each apartment has to have two spaces, and if I could fit more, I will try to. And yes, it will have private parking only, just so that the residents don't get blocked out there on the park on the street.
Okay.
And I'm, I mean, what I'd like to do is put, you know, you know how wide the entrance is, it's all the way across. What I'd like to do is put some penitillates in there and narrow that so it's one lane and, you know, one lane, two lanes shut in one direction. And that way, that would create more street parking.
Got a quick question. I was at, I'm liaison for the Planning and Zoning, and one of their main issues, they were concerned that R3 zoning automatically means low-income housing. Could you address that? I think I know your answer, but I'd like you to, to address that too, because you're going to be the landlord, so.
Correct, correct. And we are landlords already, as you may know, and we do not deal with low-income housing. There will be no Section 8, we don't allow that at all, we don't want to deal with it, and the rent is going to be fairly high, it's, because it's a new building and I'm trying to make it look really nice. Well, that, one thing I try to compare to is like Kelly Ridge Apartments, you know, that's what I'd like to do, something like that, in that style, you know.
I guess my only concern is the P and Z recommendation, so beyond, what are these undesirable residents?
That, that was all that I can remember that was brought up at all. That was the hardest, that was their biggest complaint, was the low-income powder and stuff like that.
But was it explained to them that it's not low-income housing?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, the, one, one particular member has made the statement that they would never approve any R3 anywhere in the city because that means low income.
Okay, from a legal standpoint and the code and ordinance standpoint, can we get a expla, a general explanation of R3 versus other types of zoning for the record?
Darren. I would have to do it, yes, sir.
And then you.
So, R3 zoning is, is the only allowable for multifamily. So, R2 zoning is basically duplex and R1 is single family. So, R3 can have also duplexes and single family tenants.
It's just that they're connected. It could just have apartments too, if necessary.
Correct.
R3 is the only one.
Can you speak to the constraints of maximum density a little bit? That's probably more applicable than.
Yes, off the top of my head, I don't know exactly what it is, but Ashland is pretty restrictive as, as they can attest, and it is surprised me as well. There is a chart in the code, I think it's section 9.295, I'll do on that, but I believe it's 4,000 square feet of parcel has to be set aside for each dwelling unit in R3 zone.
Furthermore, I would, and I wasn't at the P and Z meeting, and I, I'm sure Rick is paraphrasing, but I would quibble with the gentleman's comment. First, the Housing Act is a thing. Secondly, the availability of apartments is not necessarily conducive, it isn't automatically equal low-income tenants. I'm a high-income tenant, and I've always rented apartments. You all are down the street from a major university with a medical center. On the other side of the town is the Capitol Building. I, I find that in towns that are situated near high-income industries like government, universities, large medical centers, insurance companies, you have corporate types, professional types that come and go, that aren't in a position to buy a house, they, they're looking for something quick, and that's what high-density apartments feed you. So I definitely quibble with this notion that, you know, R3 equals this, again, setting aside the, I think that's poor policy, but I'm sure as a statistical matter, there are just as many folks who are highway generators and spend money who are looking for something temporary. If I was a resident at the university, I'm here for four years, going to then move somewhere else in all probability, I'm looking for an apartment.
Yeah, and to add to that with, I mean, with Rankin, I mean, I hate, I hate to even have to judge, but I mean, with Rankin, there's going to be R3, right? I mean, that's not, that's not something you can just say we're not owing that. So, I mean, like, I, I understand, I mean, I don't, I don't even like to acknowledge that there's an issue, you know, like you said, there, I mean, there's nothing wrong, inherently wrong with Section 8 housing, and it's unfortunate that it kind of devolved in that particular manner, but steering back to, I mean, it sounds like there's an initial plan that would involve the type of construction that would make the voucher process and the, I mean, the whole Section 8 process a moot point. You, you wouldn't be able to make any money that way. So, all I would just add is that I know there are some people that still have some concerns, so my request or my favor of you would be to plan in such a manner that the neighboring properties have something nice to look at, you know, whether it's evergreen bushes versus a privacy fence, because you are tucked in alongside a lot of, you know, there's some residential, there's some commercial, so I would just ask that you kind of take that into consideration going forward.
And I don't know if you've seen the properties to the south of the car wash, but my, an outhouse would look better.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
I would take it into consideration to put some bushes up to cover them up.
Yeah, I would echo your point. When we first moved and we were trying to get into Ashland, to get into the schools, we had difficulty finding a home at the time, and looked for a rental, and we're completely on a, we were like, well, we'll just live in a duplex for a year, so we find a house or we build. And so a lot of times, I know those are used kind of for people who are in transition, and it was, or people who are retiring and looking for something small and transitioning out, and there was just, there wasn't anything available, and it almost meant us not coming to Ashland over the lack of available temporary housing.
I mean, if you look at any metropolitan area, downtown St. Louis comes to mind, Washington Avenue, modern blight remediation is all about creating lost spaces for young professionals, folks who want to rent stuff. Now, Ashland's not downtown St. Louis, but I mean, there is loads of reason to believe that if you make an apartments, particularly nicer ones, attractive ones, your problem is not going to be we're going to have a lot of low-income folks, it's the opposite problem. There'll be too many high-income folks wanting to rent them. This is a good problem to have. Thanks.
Any other comments from the public?
Thanks, Terry Ren. I have a business actually, he's giving me the bill, have no problem with somebody trying to make a buck, making it better. I just have some concerns. There's a trailer park next to me, and I have to talk to the landlord monthly, close of what's happening back there, and I don't want that to happen. And my other concern is I'm below him, so I don't know what the water runoff problem is going to be. Because when you start adding houses, there's going to be water traveling past and stuff. Another concern is my dad put the sewer in the city here, and there's a sewer line that runs from, oh, to the trailer park, up to Broadway, across that lot, so that would have to be dealt with too.
What's your plan, Mr. Clor, on the, on the drainage?
Yeah, so.
That's all I have.
All right, Mr. Ren.
The, 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 the parquet typically drains to the south and to the east, so it, it drains in that direction. There, we roughly anticipate a detention pond on the easternmost section of the property, and certainly compliance with the, the ordinance that would try to mimic the pre-development runoff with the post-development runoff, so that we don't increase those peak runoffs and creating a basin to storm water in between the two. And, and any relocation of sewer that's necessary to get the buildings through there, we've, we've roughly, we've, we've located where the sewers are and think we can build without a need of relocation, but if relocation's necessary, well, that'd be parting project.
So, right now, about half the lot's concrete for the car wash?
That's right.
Is there any sort of drainage amenities now?
There's none.
So?
It's all surface straight.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Is there, is there anybody else? Oh, is there anybody else that kind of got off?
I'm just going to make a couple of comments, like Ann.
Yeah, Ann. Just need your name and address.
I didn't know what he was going to say, so we don't talk much during the day. We work together, but other than that, so I'm Peggy Ren, Ren Zalhody. I guess just a couple of concerns I have, and I think highly of the Martins and all that, and I know they mean well. I'm looking at long term, what's five years, 10 years from now, we may have a family member that takes over the business. There's no guarantee, we know that, could sell, could be sold to somebody else. Is it possible to come in and put in Section 8 or something lower income? Is that possible?
I mean, Section 8 is a program that any property can.
Right.
Go into.
So, I'm just, you know, I'm just saying, I'm looking at long term. And we have a lot of, you know, cars of low to higher value that's always parked up against that property side. Not saying that that will ever happen. You know, we've, we've got to still think about issues of after-night, late hours, vandalism. I'm not saying that that can, I mean, it can happen, doesn't say, well, one of those kind of, pushing that right, but we want tenants of, you know. And so, there's just those thoughts, you know, and we put a lot into our business for 72 years and invested a lot into the city and all that, and we're not, not being personal or against any of this as far as, you know, who they are and all that, but it's just some of those things that, I'm looking at long term in the event that we would sell or a family member took it over and, and if the place became not like we, they intend for it to be now, you know, so, you know, thank you.
No, it's all right, I just pulled it out of the trap.
Any other questions from the conference, from the public? Now, can I get a motion to approve, deny, or table Council Bill number 2023-025, an ordinance to change the zoning of a partial land to general commercial, from general commercial to R3 for Nicholas Martin William B. and Kimberly Martin, 104 South Main Street? I'll make the motion to approve. Can I have a second?
Second.
Alden Bokart?
Aye.
Alden Blank?
Name.
Alden O?
Aye.
Alden Bell?
Aye.
Alden Wilson?
Aye.
And Alden Lewis?
Aye.
Question carries. Council Bill number 2023-026, an ordinance to change the zoning of a partial land from general commercial to light industrial, Timeless Treasures in Columbia LLC, 1155 Old Park Drive.
A request by Timeless Treasures of Columbia LLC to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the rezoning of 11550 South Parkville Lane. The subject property is practically five acres in size, situated east of Highway 63 off South Parkville Lane, across from the Maud Hall Jones Roadset Department. Current zoning is CG, proposed zoning is IL, light industrial. The 2020 comprehensive plan anticipated this property to be APC, airport commercial. In 2021, there was approval to rezone to CG. The intent for this property from the beginning was to be used as a self-storage facility. During a recent building inspection, it was noticed that the gravel pad at the rear of the lot previously used as a staging area for building materials now sat empty. After discussion with the owner, it became clear the owner's desire to use the gravel for temporary storage. When the parcel was rezoned in 2021, the owner was not fully aware of the parking service requirements in CG zoning. It is always preferred, when possible, to have a parcel zoned correctly for its intended purpose. With the current zoning, CG, the only way to have a gravel backlot would be to apply for a variance. Applying for a variance can be a time-consuming process, and as previously mentioned, a variance is asking to use a property in a way not intended by the city code. With IL zoning, the owner would have the flexibility to use the back of the property for temporary gravel storage. For future phases, future phases would include removing the gravel parking area and building additional storage buildings. Staff is supportive of this rezoning as the request meets the intended use of the property and the property shares boundaries. Staff is supportive of this rezoning as the request meets the intended use of the property and the property shares boundaries with both light industrial zone properties and airport planned industrial zone properties. This was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the July 11th meeting.
Any questions?
The owner's here, by the way, if you have any questions.
Any question? Any question for the owner? Again, a motion approving Council Bill number 2023-026 in ordinance to change the zoning of a partial land from general commercial to light industrial, timeless treasures of Columbia LLC.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Almond Bochard?
Aye.
Almond Mike?
Aye.
Almond O?
Aye.
Almond Bell?
Aye.
Almond Wilson?
Aye.
Almond Lewis?
Aye.
Moving on, Council Bill number 2023 027 in ordinance to change the zoning of partial land from general commercial to light industrial, Larkin Powers. 601 East Liberty Lane.
Okay, this is a request by Larkin Powers to the Planning and Zoning, sorry, to the Board. For the rezoning of approximately 9.07 acres at 601 East Liberty Lane. This parcel is on the southwest corner of Highway 63 and east Liberty Lane. The zoning classification is CG, proposed zoning is IL light industrial. Early this year, city staff met with Mr. Powers about potential development on this parcel. His desire to put four to five large white box buildings on this site. These could be either large warehouses and/or other types of usable space. 2020 comprehensive plan accounts for this property to remain CG zoning. With 28 of the 40 permitted uses being the same between CG and IL zoning. The two districts are closely related. Some examples of the interchangeable nature of CG and IL zoning are directly across the street from this property. There is currently a restaurant, dance studio, and church in light industrial zoning and self-storage units in general commercial. After extensive research by the city staff and many discussions, it was determined that IL zoning would be the most flexible for the owner's intentions. Section 9.245 of the city code lists the permitted uses for IL zoning. The proposed use of this property being multiple white box built-to-suit buildings is in line with the demand seen in Ashland and surrounding area. Staff has fielded multiple requests for such buildings. As we currently have no building stock at this time, the proposed use of the property and zoning request would bring many opportunities for commercial investment in Ashland. After careful consideration, staff is supportive of this rezoning as this property shares boundaries with properties of light zoning. Furthermore, there currently exists few differences between general commercial and light industrial. With light industrial simply adding a few additional non-retail type permitted uses. Staff is of the opinion that light industrial zoning allows for more flexibility for future tenants of this property, which in turn allows for more immediate occupancy of the proposed units once constructed. This was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the July 11th meeting.
Any questions for staff?
Yes, the engineers.
Engineer, any question for the engineer?
What's a, what is like the white box building? I mean, is that?
I had to ask that same thing.
Is it like white metal?
It's basically, I don't know if they're necessarily white, but.
Well, I mean, like, so nothing? But that's what I'm saying. Okay, I didn't know if that was, was referring to a specific structure or like, hey, nothing.
The interior will be built to suit the.
I got you.
It's a technical term.
Well, with four to five, like, I wasn't sure, you know what I mean? Like, I was picturing, like, out there where the carpet factory outlets and all those, you know. So it, so the size is varying sizes potentially or in? Got you.
Potentially, yes, or all the same size.
Yeah, that's all I got.
No, I had to ask the same thing, actually.
Rick got educated on that. All right, can I get a motion approving Council Bill number 2023-027 in ordinance to change zoning of a partial land from general commercial to light industrial from Larkin Powers, 601 East Liberty Lane? I'll make the motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Almond Lewis?
Aye.
Almond Wilson?
Aye.
Almond Bell?
Aye.
Almond O?
Aye.
Almond Mike?
Aye.
And Almond Bochard?
Aye.
Moving on, old business, have none. Moving on to new business, a resolution authorizing appropriation of funds to certain accounts within the fiscal year 2024 budget for necessary equipment repair sewer division. Staff, please.
Authorization is needed to have repairs completed on the city-owned Ares Pathfinder Pipeline Inspection System. Repairs are needed to this system in order for it to be returned to operational status. An additional expense to the capital equipment line 40405810 for diagnostic repair of the Ares Pathfinder specifically to determine if real cable needs replaced or termination will correct the issue. And there is an estimate enclosed in your packet. In 2014, the City of Ashland purchased the Ares Pathfinder Pipeline Inspection System. The camera system is a critical piece of equipment of Ashland Public Works as it's regularly used for the inspections of sanitary sewer and stormwater sewer pipes. Over the last nine years, the system has been utilized regularly accordingly. It has begun to show signs of wear and tear.
Should we chief the?
Over the last nine years, the system has been utilized regularly accordingly. It has begun to show signs of wear and tear. Cable, real wire assembly and the connection points need replaced. This machine was purchased from Co-Equipment of Rochester, Illinois. They are the sole source vendor and authorized repair service provider for this region for Ares Pathfinder camera systems. They have diagnosed the issue with the camera system and provided service quote in the amount of $9,229.16. This expense includes all labor and materials for the needed repairs. The sewer department is requesting adding an expense for $9,229.16 to sewer's capital equipment line 40405810 in order to diagnose and repair the unit. The original fiscal year 24 budget passed allocating $20,000 for an end-up trailer and $20,000 for a crane. The Public Works Director believes that these two items will not cost what he originally budgeted. Therefore, these amounts can be modified, allowing sufficient funds remaining in 40405810 to cover the cost of the diagnostic and repair of the Ares Pathfinder unit. Based on this information, staff is asking to add the additional expense to 40405810 for $9,229.16. Diagnostic and request authorization as well for the repair. Estimate for Co-Equipment is included in the packet for reference. Staff is not asking to increase the expense line, only to add the additional capital expense for repair and authorization for the repair by Co-Equipment of Rochester, Illinois.
Any questions for staff?
So what's changed with the pricing on the dump trailer and the crane that they're significantly less than what we thought they were going to be that would allow an extra $9,000 purchase?
So originally, we budgeted $20,000 for each expenditure. And further digging, we found that we're, we found a vendor, Texas Pride Travers, where they're looking at approximately $15,000 for that trailer. We recently did a competitive bid process for the sewer crane on the truck. We did not, while we did not receive any, any bids come in on that, on that competitive bid process. In speaking with Bus Andrews out of Springfield, Missouri, they advised that they believe they could do that project for approximately $15,000 of adding the crane to the sewer truck. That truck is actually, was dropped off at Bus Andrews for evaluation today.
So they're going to do both for $30,000?
I'm sorry?
They're doing both for $30,000?
Well, Bus Andrews has, we're, we're waiting until we get a, we don't have actual numbers yet. That's just a ballpark that they gave me over the phone. The, the trailer, looking at the website for Texas Pride, we've spoken with the sales rep, and he explained that, explained what our needs were. And he stated that with government discounts, he thought he could get us around the 14, 15K mark for what we were looking for.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion approving a resolution authorizing appropriation of funds to certain accounts within the fiscal year 2024 budget for necessary equipment repair sewer division?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Almond Bochard?
Aye.
Almond Mike?
Aye.
Almond O?
Aye.
Almond Bell?
Aye.
Almond Wilson?
Aye.
And Almond Lewis?
Aye.
A resolution authorizing appropriation of funds to certain accounts within the fiscal year 2024 budget, Police Department.
Mr. Mayor, before I give this report, I did email each of the Alderman, City Administrator with an amendment to this because we had some information come in after the packet was distributed. Additional expenditures in the police budget specifically related to the increased cost of the Axon contract and additional invoices submitted pertaining uniform expenses requires a budget amendment in order for purchases to be paid. The Axon contract for additional services requires that expense line 10155380 service agreements increase by $210, so adequate funds are budgeted in this line for the remaining fiscal year agreement expenses. Additionally, expenses pertaining to uniforms has exceeded what was originally budgeted in fiscal year 24. And then the original memo says 62593. The amendment to this is amendment to increase 10155105 to a total of 4126 to cover costs of the additional vest and equipment for the possible new hire in addition to the invoices that were submitted. Staff is proposing to decrease line 10155,000, which is salaries by $4,335.93. Due to the current vacancies, this fund line can support a decrease of $4,335.93 to increase line 10155380 and 10155105. The decrease of fund line 10155,000 and increase to fund lines 10155380 and 5105 equal thus having no overall fiscal impact to the fund itself.
Any questions for staff? Can I get a motion approving a resolution authorizing appropriation of funds to certain accounts within the fiscal year 2024 budget for the Police Department?
So moved.
I have a second.
Sorry.
Almond Bochard?
Aye.
Almond Mike?
Aye.
Almond O?
Aye.
Almond Bell?
Aye.
Almond Wilson?
Aye.
And Almond Lewis?
Aye.
A resolution authorizing a purchase of a coal planer skid loader attachment.
Mr. Mayor, this agenda item for you is regarding the previously approved, or, excuse me, the planned purchase of a coal planer skid loader attachment for this year. It was approved in the FY24 budget. We've completed that competitive bid process. We received one bid from Martin Equipment for this item with a couple of different options. Initially, we budgeted $26,920 for this purchase. The bid for the 24-inch coal planer came in at $26,913.28. This purchase will allow Public Works Staff Streets Division to complete pothole repairs in a more effective manner through the use of, of the coal planer as a milling head. It's identical to what Capitol Paving, Chris and Paving, like, use on their skid loaders when we hire them to do milling overlay of streets. This allows us to go out and hit these ongoing potholes rather than just fill them with coal patch and wait for it to pop out each winter and then do it all over again. We can mill these, cut these potholes out and make a permanent repair utilizing hot mix asphalt and tack over, tack heat. This purchase would, for a prime example is, unfortunately, this purchase won't come in until September of this year, but a prime example of why it is needed. Working with Boone County Road Bridge, they agreed to loan us their skid loader-mounted coal planer to do some work on South Henry Clay Boulevard so that we can get it ready for anticipated ship seal to happen at some time this construction season.
Any questions for staff?
So when they're in the bid, there's two different items, so there's CP18G, which is less expensive than the CP24G. What's the difference?
It's 18 inches wide versus 24. We had looked at that and for essentially what amounts to $2,150 difference, we feel that 24-inch wide version would be best. It would allow us to go in and particularly where we see rutting down sections of North Main and Henry Clay, it would allow us to complete those areas in one pass versus multiple.
Any other questions? I need a motion approving a resolution authorizing purchase of a coal planer skid loader attachment.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Sorry.
Almond Lewis?
Aye.
Almond Wilson?
Aye.
Almond Bell?
Aye.
Almond O?
Aye.
Almond Mike?
Aye.
And Almond Bochard?
Aye.
A resolution of Board of Aldermen of Ashland, Missouri authorizing the mayor to execute the contract documents with Capitol Paving and Construction LLC for fiscal year 2024 Mill and Overlay Asphalt Resurfacing Project. Staff, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This agenda item pertains to the Mill and Overlay project for this year. Bids were recently, competitive bid process was recently completed. Two bids were received. Capitol Paving and Construction and MoSeal Asphalt. The, the bid packet included three streets, Billy Joseph Drive, Appaloosa Drive, Loop as one street, Christie Lane, those, those two streets can surprise the base bid item one and two. Middleton Drive was put in as an alternate bid item that if pricing was outstanding, that we could add in and take one off of next year's planning. Capitol Paving was the apparent low bidder with a combined bid of $154,321.25. The total budget for the Mill and Overlay this year was $200,000. Staff recommends that Capitol Paving and Construction be awarded this contract in the amount of $154,321.25. Those remaining funds would be available for other possible project overruns that may occur during the fiscal year 24.
Any questions? Will this fix the curb problem of Christie Lane?
So, no, this will actually fix the road deck only. But we are currently talking with another vendor for mass curb and gutter repair throughout the city.
Can I get a motion approving a resolution of Board of Aldermen of Ashland, Missouri authorizing the mayor to execute the contract documents with Capitol Paving and Construction LLC for fiscal year 2024 Mill and Overlay Asphalt Resurfacing Project?
I'll make the motion.
Can I have a second?
A second.
Almond Bochard?
Aye.
Almond Mike?
Aye.
Almond O?
Aye.
Almond Bell?
Aye.
Almond Wilson?
Aye.
And Almond Lewis?
Aye.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contractual agreement with a police officer candidate. The report for you tonight in your packet is to potentially contract with a current officer at UMPD to buy out his contract and bring him over to the City of Ashland Police Department. Action item before you would be not only the, the coverage of that financial obligation, but also the outfitting with new equipment for that officer since we have custom fitted vests that are issued by our department. The board just approved the budget amendment that would facilitate this transaction if desired by the board. I spoke with this officer this morning in light of personnel circumstances with the Police Department, and he advised that he is still desirous of being employed by the City of Ashland if you'd like to be considered for employment by the City of Ashland. And he would like an answer tonight if the board has any interest in buying out his contract and bringing him over. Chief Edwards did provide in the packet a contract that would cover reimbursement of the debt reassignment in the event that this officer chose to re-employment prior to the completion of his contract with the city and what that would look like to help repay the costs associated with buying out his contract. My understanding is that this draft contract that, that was edited by Chief Edwards is the Boone County model, I believe? Any questions for staff? I get a motion to approve an authorization for the mayor to enter into a contractual agreement with a police candidate, officer candidate.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
One second.
Almond Lewis?
Aye.
Almond Wilson?
Aye.
Almond Bell?
Aye.
Almond O?
Aye.
Almond Plank?
Aye.
Almond Billcart?
Aye.
Moving on to G, a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of Ashland, Missouri authorizing the mayor to execute the contract documents for MMML Landscaping and Construction LLC for the Perry Avenue Extension. Staff report please.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this agenda item pertains to the four encyclopedia mechanicas at sit in front of you. We also call those contracts. This project, as we're well aware, has been a long time coming. This is just one more step in the process. Previously, Board of Aldermen had issued notice of award to MMLC for this project. As this project, as that was reviewed by Desert Department of Transportation, we were given concurrents of award which allowed us to complete execution of the contract, which is what the proposition is before you this evening. Upon execution of contract, it will be sent back to vote out for review and once they authorize us, we'll issue notice to proceed after conferring with that contractor and establishing a timeline for when the work can begin.
Any questions? I get a motion to approve our resolution of the Board of Aldermen of Ashland, Missouri authorizing the mayor to execute the contract documents with MMML Landscaping and Construction LLC for the Perry Avenue Extension Project. So moved. I have a second.
Second.
Almond Billcart?
Aye.
Almond Plank?
Aye.
Almond O?
Aye.
Almond Bell?
Aye.
Almond Wilson?
Aye.
Almond Lewis?
Aye.
Moving on to reports. Mayor report, uh, had pride fest in the park over the weekend. It went very well. No hiccups. Everything was cool. Had a lot of people attend. Uh, softball games are going great, so you can thank the park board for me. I love them. And some, and we're getting some people to come and watch. It is. We are getting some people to watch, so that's my report. Thank you. City Administrator.
Couple things. So we had a Board of Adjustment meeting last week. We had two items on the agenda for Board of Adjustment. One was request for a variance for height requirements in CG zoning submitted by Lakeside Ashland. Board of Adjustment voted to approve that variance request, allowing for the forthcoming building permit for the construction of the zip line. That's been quite talked about, so everyone should be aware of that project. The other item was a request for variance for various aspects of our sign regulations with regards to placement of monument signs and billboards. And particularly applicant was for the placement of a billboard at Highway 63 storage, the old Sentinel lumberyard. The Board of Adjustment voted to deny this variance request. It was a three-part variance request. They voted no on, on all, all aspects of the variance request. We will have another Board of Adjustment meeting next month. Agenda is forthcoming on that one. You have a date on that?
August 24th.
There you go. August 24th, seven o'clock right here. Other than that, I know Darren has a note in his report about land use development code. We're back to having weekly meetings with Community Recode on that particular project. We anticipate within the coming weeks, we'll start the review sessions of planning and zoning as well as a few public sessions for some input prior to bringing it to the board for approval. So we're winding that down. Still have a few months on it, but we're approaching finish line.
City Attorney Report?
I had previously advised the board that there was a police bill. It was a comprehensive, large bill. Does lots of different things. Uh, that somewhat unexpectedly got vetoed by the governor, so that won't be coming into effect. Um, and then I will have a report for you all in closed session.
Moving on to Public Works Department Director Report.
In the interest of gravity, Mr. Mayor, any questions regarding the report? Of the items I've discussed tonight, the only caveat to that is I will point out that we are scheduled to work the South Main Street Waterline Street Resurfacing Project to begin on Monday. Expect some road closures. We'll be sending out more communications as they get closer.
When's the completion date?
Ideally, the end of August prior to the school year beginning, but who knows what the weather. And so certainly our goal is optimistic. We will see how the project goes. There's just unfortunately too many variables to be able to give you a hard, fast answer to that.
Sneak back. Almond Lewis, please. All right, moving on to Community Development Director of the monthly report.
Since the esteemed city administrator, Richard, of the new items, I'd just ask if you have any question?
Thank you, sir. Here on that. Board of Aldermen Report. Almond Billcart?
No report.
Almond Plank? Well, that's next. Yeah. We're not quite there yet. Uh, Almond Billcart?
No report.
Almond Plank?
No report.
Almond O?
No report.
Almond Bell?
No report.
Almond Wilson?
No report.
And Almond Lewis?
No report.
Yeah, moving on to general comments and public.
So my name is Kristen Colbert and unfortunately, I, I did strongly disagree with you, Mr. Mayor, regarding the pride event in Athlin. So I'm here to express my concerns to the board of some of the events that occurred during the second annual Ashland Pride Event. And I have no problem with this event happening. I did not attend because I don't associate myself with that. However, I understand it is everyone's right to celebrate in their own manner. However, I was very taken back when I began to see pictures and videos posted on social media from the event. One attendee posted a video of a drag queen dressed in minimal clothing, dancing inappropriately on top of a picnic table, taking money from adults and young children. I'm not quite sure how we don't see this as adult entertainment. I was even more taken back when the Ashland Betterment Coalition had posted on their Instagram photos from the event as well and a stripper pole was in the public park. I mean, I, I am struggling to see how this is not considered adult entertainment. And per City Code, Chapter 23, adult entertainment cannot be within 1,500 feet of a public park, a public school, a church, and there's a long list of other things. It was held in a public park right next to the high school, which is a public high school, and very close proximity to a local church as well. If we are allowing these things to happen in a public park, how can I be sure that this won't soon be happening in our public schools? We have to protect our children and I am asking the board and Ashland PD to do that. Enforce the city code, allow these events to happen, but we have to have some guidelines. This is inappropriate and it's not fair to the community and this is not what the community wants.
Any other comments on, on the book?
More different topic. I appreciate.
Name and address, please.
I'm Jeffrey Owens. I live on Loyalist Line. Recently Amex portion of, or for me, recently Amex. I'm not sure. Resident of Ashland for about five years. Moved in from South County. So that's Liberty Landing one. Now there's Liberty Landing two. So I appreciate the opportunity, you know, just got home from work, changed my shirt and looking for a way to, uh, get plugged in a little bit better to understand planning and had a couple things I was hoping that you might take note of. I'd like to understand how Liberty Landing could possibly gain some sidewalk or pedestrian pathway out of the subdivision. I don't know. Who's, who's the alderman for that area?
Just, just to, I guess, provide you some information. We actually have an approved transportation alternatives grant to fund that sidewalk. That project is underway. I don't know if you're aware of that or not.
So.
And that would connect Liberty Landing south all the way to South Henry Clay Boulevard.
Okay.
Is that what you're looking for?
How do you access that information? How could I share that with the neighborhood?
I mean, that's, James will give you a card. He's the project manager for that.
Thank you. So in addition to waiting for a grant to help fund that, I mean, if there was a way for the neighborhood or, you know, like I'm maybe the first person you might have heard of saying that I would be interested in how I could contribute to making that happen because when I moved in there five years ago, like it's been five years and for another five years ago, I just feel curious to plug in to that particular objective. I think it'd be, if it's possible and we can do it, it'd be great.
So we've been awarded the grant, so it's, it's happening. It's just.
What's aside dollar amount of the grant? Just out of curiosity. Tens of thousands of dollars, millions of dollars.
Not really.
Also, it's a hundred and some thousand dollars.
Hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
There's more to it than just that sidewalk.
So just want to bring it to your attention that we've got a large subdivision, then a second one. We don't, we're kind of an island. We can't safely get out of there. A lot of people like myself have school age children. I ideally would have liked for my child to have been able to walk to the elementary primary. He wasn't. I appreciate the school bus, but just comment. And I'll try to move on to my other, uh, request was that, um, and curiosity was in the, in the city park. If there's been any thought to adding, uh, basketball goals.
James? James's car.
That might be an easier lift than.
We're doing lunch tomorrow. We're on, we're on the same wavelength.
I'll be in contact with you, so. Sounds like good, uh, like minds, things alike.
I get a motion going to, both go into closed session percent to RS MLO Chapter 610 dot 021. I'll make that. I have a second.
Sorry.
Almond Billcart?
Aye.
Almond Plank?
Aye.
Al, Almond O?
Aye.
Almond Bell?
Aye.
Almond Lewis?
Aye.
Almond Wilson?
Aye.
Can we make a comment?
In what regards?
Just in that, you know, I, I feel like there are a lot of questions surrounding the circumstances and I just want to make known that, you know, people have been asking me about it and I want to just make known that what happens in closed session is actually closed. And I intend to seek the discipline of any city staff who, who goes against the email that we got that says, do not disclose information that has been shared with you. That is the subject of closed session. So before we go there, I want to make that known, that it's closed means closed.
Need a roll call. Oh, yes, sir. I did that. Yeah, we did that. Oh, I'm sorry.
Staff received report, no action was taken. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.